Good afternoon, welcome to the special meeting of the Bellingham City Council. We'll be talking about our comp plan today for August 1st, 2016. And we can move right into it. Members excused is Terri Borneman today for council, otherwise everyone is present. And I'm going to turn this over right from the get-go to Ted, is that correct? Or am I going to Lisa first?
Good afternoon, Lisa Poole, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. So what we're going to be doing today is we're going to be going through the City Council Comment Tracker. There were a number of suggestions and comments made regarding the Capital Facilities and Transportation Chapters. So what we need to do is where we proposed a new policy, we need to have you make a motion on that. Thumbs up or down that you want that change to be made for the plan. And then from there, if we get through the Capital Facilities and Transportation, we can move on to land use and housing and continue that discussion.
Lisa, we can't quite see the entire slide on here.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if you'd rather have it zoomed in or not to be able to... Does that look okay? And this is in your packet as well?
Okay, so just to review, our agenda today is that we are just reiterating comments and action items. We are also going to have an opportunity for public comment, and then we will take questions from all of the councils. So just to be clear on how our agenda. And it looks like Michael Liliquist has something right from the get-go.
Well, I'm just thinking we probably should zoom in. We could read it in our packet, but the public can't read that at all, so... Even the zoom cuts off a bit, it might be better.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I can... I won't probably be reading all of the individual language for the policies, but I will make note of which number we're on. Does that work for you?
Can you scroll on the bottom to the left?
There we go.
Terrific!
Okay.
All right.
So, that... So, I'll let you get to page one in the packet, and that's where we'll start. So, under item number one, there are three proposed changes. We are proposing for the Transportation Chapter to add one new policy, and then two changes to Policies 11 and Policies 12. So on this screen, you can see the one new policy, as well as the change to Policy 11, which is the underlined portion. The purple was the Planning Commission's changes. And then on the second page, you can see Policy T12, the underline, was the new portion on that. So you might be able to take all three of those at once.
Councilmember Parker?
Ted, I know Mark had some questions regarding the language, so can you go over?
Yeah, sure. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. There was a question about whether these proposed revisions, I think primarily the changes to T11 and T12, could result in perhaps certain segments of street being developed not... and not being required to build sidewalk. That was the concern. And I think, from staff's perspective, I think what we're trying to do, kind of based on what Planning Commission and what we understand council was saying, provide some administrative flexibility for when it truly doesn't make any sense, perhaps, to build just a short section of sidewalk that has no connectivity, that that could be an administrative change, rather than having to go to the hearing examiner for a variance. I think, we believe these policy revisions are okay. We're going to have to come back to the council with amendments to the BMC, because currently the Bellingham Municipal Code doesn't allow for that administrative flexibility. When we propose the changes to the municipal code, we'll highlight some criteria that would have to be met in order for that administrative decision to be made, to say you don't have to construct this section of sidewalk. So, I... We talked about it, and we believe these proposed changes get to the intent of both the Planning Commission and what we understood the council's discussion to be, which is certainly not to limit the times when people have to build sidewalk. We certainly want people to construct sidewalk throughout the city. It's urban standard, that's what we want. But we would like to have, we understand you guys would like to have a little bit of administrative flexibility. And so we think this gets us here, along with the proposed BMC amendments that will have to come forward in the future.
Councilmember Liliquist?
Thanks, Mickey. So Ted, as I understand you, the policy is... seems pretty wide open. It says, "would be allowed where no public purpose is served," and that's the part that we would need BMC criteria for. And one of those criteria, I hope, is that if it's part of a pedestrian or transit network, then it does serve a public purpose, and it cannot be exempted.
That's correct.
As long as that's clear in the BMC, then I'm okay with the changes.
Councilmember Parker?
Well, I appreciate this, and I think it really does get at what the Planning Commission was trying to get at, and also what people who are developing properties that are out there, so they have some flexibility. And of course, we'll give our directors some flexibility in that. So with that, I move that we accept the new policy, T11, T12, and the policy that's not named, that's developed, and administrative process that allows for departure from acquired infrastructure, blah, blah, blah.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, we have a motion to accept item number one, Policies T11 and T12 updates. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero with one excused.
Okay. Moving on, item number two, staff did not propose any changes for that one.
Councilmember Parker?
So I picked up our minutes from that day, and it was motioned, and motion carried seven zero, and the exact language was, "direct administration to develop a sixth goal named T6 related to policies of transportation and environmental justice." So, I'm still learning on how the council things works, but that was direct instruction, was my understanding from the council, to develop a goal. Not to add more language somewhere else, but to specifically develop a goal on environmental justice.
Yeah, that's... I'd have to go... We'd have to go back and talk about that a little bit. What staff discussion was related to was, that was kind of a theme that was likely to come up throughout the different chapters of the comprehensive plan, to have those policies related to environmental and social justice. And rather than do it in each element of the comp plan, to have some overarching language, and I think that's what's being referenced to in the comment tracker here, is the definition in the introduction of the comp plan, that the intent was that it covers all of the elements in a sense of overarching tone. And I don't know if Lisa wants to speak to that in more detail.
I mean, that's true. We did... We'll get to it later on, but we did add a definition and introduction, as well as we did address some of many of your other comments, which are very appropriate for land use and housing.
I guess that's the question back to the council is...
The direction from the council was to develop a goal, and specifically with environmental justice, because it's... That was from the paperwork that I gave you guys from the feds, that said specifically, "here's some help with the local administrations to really identify these things and be very specific about them in transportation." And I did see, I mean, I was really thrilled to read through this, and it looks like you guys clearly put a lot of thought, and I really liked a lot of language. But I think where I'm a little concerned, and this is just helping me also to understand the process of council since I'm new, but my understanding is when... Because it does take a little bit to get council all on the same page and voting for something, that when that goes through, that's the direction from the council. Is that correct? So like, something like this, this says to specifically add a goal. I'm just trying to understand this better, so as I go through process for the next three and a half years, I know how to get what it is that I'm looking for.
Right. I think our understanding with many of the motions that were made was that we would take that back and look at the existing chapters and existing plans, see if those are maybe covered already, if not, add it. And so, that's why in some cases, you'll just see that the comments address and not a change made.
Yeah, and I know on a lot of my motions, it was like, "where appropriate," and I specifically did that to give some flexibility to staff, but this was one I felt like there was enough clout coming from national state all the way down to local. So, I don't know where that goes from here, but that... I got the language here printed for you in case.
Okay. I think then, when we went back and looked, we felt like a lot of those points were already made, and obviously, if it's a federal requirement, we're going to comply with it.
They... The paperwork that I handed over, it was just showing, here's some examples of how local. It was not a federal requirement.
Right, and I do... Yeah, and I think we felt like those examples, many of them were already included. That's why we didn't add a new one for this one.
I personally would still... I'd still like to see that language, and I'd like to have very specific policies directed at it, because, like other things, we re-reference back and forth. This is... Environmental justice is, of course, under social justice, but it's a very specific thing, as we infill especially, that we have to be extremely sensitive, and so that's where I'm at. And so I'd like for that motion to stand, but...
Pinky?
Some of you that have been here longer than me.
Um, so, Mayor Kelly, and then Michael Liliquist, I see you.
Well, obviously, the staff did what they thought they were directed to do. It does say, "adopt Goal Six," so I think that we can look at what we thought were the specific things, but we'll develop a goal, and then you can decide if you want to include it or not in the comprehensive plan.
Councilmember Liliquist, did you have something that was pertaining to this as well?
Yeah. So, thank you, Mayor. I think that will address my concerns. I understood it similar to April, that we asked for a policy. I'd be very happy with the policy referencing where equity is addressed elsewhere in the document, including where it's referenced at the beginning, and also where it's referenced in those two kind of satellite documents, the pedestrian and the bicycle master plan. What I really liked about those, in both cases, equity was a named guiding principle. I see no reason why equity can't be a named guiding principle here, in sort of a master chapter, and that's not a conflict. I think that's actually meeting the GMA requirement, that the document be internally consistent. So whatever comes forward, if it kind of speaks in the same language and points to where equity is reflected at each level in the document, at the beginning, in the middle, and the end, I think that'd be good.
And there are a lot of specifics in here, so I hope that the council will listen to the staff's recommendations about what should be in the comprehensive plan and what could be in some other document.
Lisa, is that clear?
Yes.
So we are asking for a policy that will... We will come back to that.
A new transportation goal, T6. And, well, okay, so, let me clarify. So the goal, T6, says to develop policies on transportation and environmental justice.
Yeah, I didn't...
I think the motion was to develop T6, and T6 would just be a statement of...
And with policies under it.
Yeah. Yeah, so it was, "direct administration to develop a sixth goal named T6 related to policies on transportation and environmental justice." And then, we had a discussion, and I just said, "these are examples that I pulled from the federal documents."
Right.
You didn't have to do those specifically.
So we'll develop a goal and a policy or two to go under the goal, because we typically don't have just a standalone goal without the policies, so, okay.
Okay, everybody's clear on that one? Okay. And Councilmember Hamel, you're good? Okay.
Okay, so are we moving on to number three then? So for number three, we did have a change for that, and that's listed right here. Some new proposed language for the call-out box next to goal, T2.
Councilmembers, are you just rereading it? Councilmember Liliquist?
I like the way you've proposed addressing it, that is in a call-out box, but I don't see how that met what I think we needed, which was the fact that sustainability can be used in a number of ways, and it's not clear to me this is defining how sustainability is meant in this sense. And from staff discussion, it seems sustainability had to do with financial sustainability, the ability to not only build, but to maintain and add to the structures over time financially. And the statement doesn't really kind of say that. It says financially sustainable, but that kind of, again, uses the word without defining what we mean.
Yeah, we tried to get at it by saying, "maintained over a manner of time," so that we can maintain the assets that are built. So this one was, as you correctly pointed out, more related to financial sustainability, the ability to continue to fund, maintenance, repair, and replacement of assets, whereas the next comment refers to the broader definition used elsewhere in the comp plan of sustainability. So, we tried to get to the financial discussion in this call-out.
I think I would just prefer a really simple, clearer statement, that sustainability in this context refers to financial sustainability, the ability to continue to maintain, own, and operate these structures into the future. I mean, something really, really simple, that in this context, that's what we mean. And everything you said, of course, is germane to that. Where we get our sources of funding from, you know, how sustainability is achieved, those are equally important.
Pinky? May I just suggest that I... As I said before, when we look at our policies and how we're implementing them, we're looking at it in a sustainable way. So I think it makes a lot of sense to have, what Michael's talking about, the broader goal. I don't know if what's... I don't know if what follows meets that criteria, but I would like to indicate that that's a goal the city has, that they use on everything they do. So can we look if... See if there's a better place to put it, because it's not just maintaining public access, it's maintaining level of service, it's maintaining our financial balance, it's maintaining a lot of different things. And so the whole concept with sustainability is that you manage over time, and it's sustainable. And so figuring out a different way to describe sustainable, so that it applies to everything, would certainly, I think, send a stronger message than on each... on each goal, because we have that kind of commitment. So could we work on something that maybe is the overall sustainability, simple, that you're talking about?
Sure, but I do think there are at least two large versions of sustainability, and the one we're referring to is financial sustainability, the ability to, you know, keep the systems up and running, and as you say, at a level of service. But there's also sustainability also used in an environmental context, and in the other chapter, we use it in that context. And so I just think, here in the Transportation Chamber, Chapter, it makes sense to define what sustainability means in this context. I think that was what the issue is, is it has multiple meanings. Let's be clear in this chapter, what we mean in this chapter.
The way it's used in Goal T2 is slightly different than the way it is used on... If you look at item number four below, we talk about it in several other places in the plan, and it's economic, social, and environment. It's all three of those components. So, I understand your point, and I think we can tweak that slightly, if you'd like. So we won't be voting on that one at this time?
Well, maybe we should clarify, because are you saying that we're putting that definition in there, but we are going to put a overall definition of sustainability in the beginning of the comp plan?
We have it currently. Number four is that request, is to talk about sustainability and to talk about how it's used in the plan, and it currently is defined in several places throughout the plan. What we mean by that's the broader definition, the triple bottom line, three-legged stool. And for Goal T2, it is a slightly different... It's a much more narrow definition of sustainability. So I... We understood Michael's point in needing to clarify that, and we tried to do that with the language, but he's... I don't think he's okay with that current language, so we need to go back and work on it a little bit.
So therefore, are we making a motion for item number three, or we're just going to pass until we have a definition that we're all...
I think staff and the mayor suggested they'll come back with a sharpened version.
Okay. Anyone else ready to move to number four?
Number five was just sort of a cleanup. Michael made a comment that this chart wasn't with the goal that it was supposed to be with, so we can make that. I don't think you necessarily need to vote on that. It's just sort of a cleanup. Number six, here. There was a change for A, which was adding parks and recreation, for T2, third bullet. These are comments from April.
That came from being on the Parks Board, or Parks, I think it's called Parks, yeah. Many times, it was said over and over that we have all these wonderful parks and recreation, but sometimes in the plans, we're not staying connected to those. And so, I just wanted to follow through with the comments that I heard by attending those board meetings and bring it here, so.
So there are several comments in here. Are we looking at accepting them all?
No, only A at this time.
I move to accept that change.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Then if you move on, our next change would be on E, and that's T3, second bullet, the sixth opened circle. And we've added off-site parking along the transit corridor per April's request. And that's on page six of the tracker, E.
That, too, just came from attending different public meetings and learning that hopefully, as we connect our corridors, especially with WTA, that people might want to park somewhere, and then follow the bus route through, and then come back, and that somebody might be able to attain their parking requirements if we're trying to densify by having something that they purchased, especially in homes. I've just met... Meeting more and more people that really do want to live in a very dense center, and of course, still want to have a car, but are only using that car to go to Seattle or do something. They don't want the car right there next to them, but might be able to have this car out somewhere that might be more appropriate that they can get to on WTA. So that's where that comment came from.
Councilmember Liliquist?
Move approval of recommendation E.
All those in favor, and this is to approve action item E. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
So for six, we weren't proposing any other changes on that particular item. We ready to move on to number seven?
Yes.
Number seven, so we did propose a change for this, and this was... Chris Como brought this up at the meeting when he made a presentation, and this is more of a requirement from the State Department of Transportation.
Councilmember Liliquist?
Move approval of stack of recommendation seven.
Okay, this is for item number seven. We have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, six zero, sorry, one excused.
So those are our comments on the Transportation Chapter that we received, and I think we'll go ahead and move on to the Capital Facilities and Utilities Chapter, if you're ready.
Counsel?
Yep. Okay. So, under Capital Facilities and Utilities, number eight, this is on page seven of the tracker. We're proposing to modify the proposed language to keep the policy general, and to add a new policy, CF after Policy CF13. It's listed there, where the... My arrow is.
Councilmember Parker and Murphy?
Oh, I move approval to add this language and the policy.
Okay, counsel, discussion?
I'm trying to catch up, sorry.
Oh, okay. We are on item number eight, under Capital Facilities and Utilities Chapter.
Page seven of the tracker.
Page seven. We have a motion to change the wording for item number eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero with one excused.
Okay. Moving right along. The next page, page eight of the tracker, item number 10. We're suggesting to modify Policy CF43 to add, "and health and safety of its workers," right where my cursor is.
Councilmember Parker?
I move approval.
Second. Discussion. Okay, we are on item number 10, and the motion is to approve the updated language. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, one excused.
Okay, number 11, we're suggesting a modification for Policy CF60, adding or other type of
Councilmember Hamel, and then Parker?
I wasn't going to support this until I saw the language under item 13, that supports the public-public, public-private, so I'm going to move that we approve the language that staff recommends on item 11.
Second. Mayor Kelly?
I just wonder if that allows a co-location also, because it says, "branch location," which some people could determine was separate, or other type of satellite facility. I just want to make sure it includes, and staff, I don't know, but it includes co-locating as we do it, you know, Barclay or with the community college, or some other opportunity.
I see, Michael. And I also have a clarification on this, is number 11 says, "develop a plan," whereas number 13 is just about the opportunity, so it seems like they are two different.
Well, 11 is the policy, and 13 is just some supporting text. Both of these were reviewed by library staff.
Okay. Councilmember Parker, then Liliquist?
Well, I'm glad to hear it does, because if you look to the left, you'll see I had a lot more specific language regarding, especially Walk On Community College, who sounds like, as they do their learning comments, we already might have a space there that we could utilize. So anything that... I appreciate your comment. I want to make sure that wherever we're getting at does allow for co-location, which is part of that before, public-private, public-public. If we're good.
I feel like a satellite, the term satellite kind of covers that.
Mayor Kelly?
And I know we're talking about the potentially, the capital, this is talking also about the services, and understanding that even a cost-effective location, co-location, would still have to be... The services would still have to be provided. So, just be able to say that, so we know that when I bring it up again, it will be considered.
Referring to the, "we could have a building, but we still need to staff it and operate it." I just want to make sure... Councilmember Liliquist?
I agree with what Kelly's saying, and I'd actually would prefer to us to explicitly mention the possibility of co-location in the Capital Facilities Task Force under library and other things. We mentioned co-location is one of the principles for saving on infrastructure costs. I think there's no harm in some benefit, that, you know, Kelly and I may not be here when that facility comes about. I think it'd be good to just include possible co-location in addition to satellite facilities, the range of acceptable options.
Councilmember Murphy?
I move that we amend the language to say, "of other type of satellite facility or co-location."
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Parker, are you comfortable with...
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. Am I hearing you correctly, in that we're looking at a central library, hopefully, at some point, and then, of course, saying that we would also like to look at plans to the north, that there could be some conflicting budgetary stuff there, or...
Right. I'm saying that as we look at our capital facility and our level of service funding, and our choices on our capital projects, the priorities of our capital projects, just making sure that we all understand that those are all included as we're making decisions on what we're going to do first, and how we're going to operate it. Because we do have a bit of a problem with, you know, one of our facilities, that we don't have the operational money to keep it open full-time.
And that would be part of that, developing a plan and making sure that it's sustainable financially, so is that reasonable, that we have that there, but it certainly doesn't preclude us from maybe having to make choices on the timing of that with some of the other library services?
Right. I mean, I think that this is part of the... This is kind of partially part of the Capital Facilities discussion that we're going to have with you.
Councilmember Liliquist?
Thanks, Roxanne, for making that motion. And April, you're exactly right. For example, we may need a community center in the north, and that may really be kind of a Parks Department kind of function, but if the building could co-locate both those facilities, similarly, we may want to pre-position firefighting equipment in the north, and it might be nice to have a bay there, for example. That's the kind of co-location it saves on the upfront costs and maybe the operational costs. Hopefully, maybe.
Councilmember Hamel?
I'll be supporting Councilmember Murphy's motion here, and to the mayor's point, and do support a point under item... do support a point under item thirteen, the last sentence on the staff suggested amended language, the city should also explore options for private-public partnerships to help reduce costs and maximize facility use and sharing of resources. I do agree with that ongoing point that we do need to be looking at that in the future.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us that has been amended to include co-locations. All those in favor, and this is again for item number eleven on our policy today. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, one excused.
I'd also like to move that we accept the language for number thirteen.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, so, all those in favor, and this is item number thirteen for the new verbiage, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, one excused.
Okay, moving on, on page nine of your packet, you'll see number fourteen, and staff is proposing a new policy in the capital facilities chapter, which is located where the cursor is.
Sorry, councilmember Parker.
And I didn't have a chance to follow up with Dr. Baker on this one, but I'm assuming from all the meetings that I've been at, and there's, there's at times a little friction with people who buy a home in Bellingham and are expecting they're going to be going to Bellingham schools, and then they find out they're going to Meridian schools, and especially with that growth to the north, it felt, and it's just proportional growth with our lower-income families that are moving out there, that it's quite a safety net to know that they're going to also be being taught within our one-schoolhouse model, so had you reached out to him? I'm assuming this language is perfectly fine with the school district, but I would like to, okay, great, so therefore I'd so move the language regarding working with the school districts when we have our UGA.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, we have a motion in front of us, and this is for item number fourteen, to approve the language, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero.
Okay, moving on to number fifteen, which is right under that one, and that is adding some new language to page fourteen of the capital facilities chapter regarding the Bellingham Police Department.
Councilmember Hamel and Lillikwist.
I just wanted to ask staff if Bellingham police had been, had weighed in on this language.
I'm sorry?
I just wanted to see if staff, or ask staff if Bellingham police had had time to weigh in on this language.
Yes, they provided this language to us.
Move approval on this language.
Okay, councilmember Lillikwist.
I appreciate the change in the language, I think it's really good being explicit that we are a community policing city. And so it goes ninety percent of where I think we need to go, but what I would like to see, and maybe you can actually come out, policy CF forty-two says develop a five-year Bellingham fire department strategic plan, I believe. Police departments also develop strategic plans, I don't know if our city has a strategic plan. What I would really like to see is the section where the cities accept the recommendation of an even split between proactive and reactive time per hour is our, that's our real level of service goal. That is the real service-level goal that extras are recommended to us, that's the real goal that the police department is trying to staff up to, it's what they're monitoring, but nowhere in the document do we kind of, in this document, do we say that's our goal. And since we don't have a strategic plan for the police, it doesn't say it there either because that place doesn't exist. So I would, you know, it says it in the document, but it's not, doesn't say it as a policy. It just says it's a recommendation to the police department, and that's the police department's goal. It doesn't say it's a city goal, so I would still like us to state in some policy form that is our policy, that the police department will adequately staff to meet the goal of an even split of proactive and reactive time per hour for the next five years, twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen. I'd like that to be a policy, not just a statement inside the middle of a sentence or paragraph.
I'm not sure, point in order, are we, can we get over this one and add this language in, and then if it sounds like you're wanting a motion on a policy versus just the language in here?
Right, I imagine a motion really had to do with developing a policy.
Approving this language, and then you might want to make a motion? I thought that's what was on the table. Is that what we were doing? Okay.
So, Michael, are you asking to change what is updated language in number fifteen or overall policy?
No, I welcome the changes in fifteen, but I, there's, there's the text which describes things, and then there's a policy which goes with it, and we've got a much improved version of the text, but we still lack the policy, so I'll be voting to support this language change, but then asking for actually a policy which states the, what I call a level of service goal, which is acknowledged in the text but not adopted as a policy.
And I think that Michael would agree about having a discussion with the chief or bringing, having the chief here to talk about that before we actually come up or before the staff comes up with language, so that it's clear how they, they think that they can put this in here without it being so specific, it gives them no flexibility to assign that.
Right, but that's why I was trying to adopt the language already in here, so I wasn't creating anything new that wasn't already previously.
And I think item number sixteen, we might be able to kind of wrap that into that discussion, possibly, with the information that we don't know yet. Councilmember Murphy?
Move approval of the language change for fifteen.
Second.
Okay.
We already did that.
We did, and I'm going to turn it over to Greg for a moment.
I ran into the chief on the way in, he planned to be here today but got called away, and so I guess I would ask you not maybe to do anything until he has a chance to talk to you. He did indicate that he was going to be making a presentation to council in the next month or so regarding level of service staffing issues.
Councilmember Lillikwist.
I'm going to recommend that we ask that we go ahead and vote on approving fifteen, but then pick it back up when the chief comes in.
Okay, so we're going to, right now, the motion in front of us is to approve the updated language on item number fifteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero with one excused.
Okay, moving on, page ten of your tracker.
Can we address item number sixteen just for a moment, which I believe segues into what we were just talking about, or like councilmember Lillikwist just mentioned? So it looks as though the police department is going to come back to us with information on that?
Yes, correct.
And we could maybe include what councilmember Lillikwist just talked about in regard to the change of the policy? So that's, it's kind of vague, it says coming back, but is there something that we could know by a certain date that we will address that? I guess we're going to have to approve this pretty soon, so it's not, it's going to be delayed.
Yeah, I'm not sure, does anyone know when he was planning on making that presentation? Soon.
Okay.
So, no, none of us know.
All right, so, item number sixteen is tabled until we have a presentation from Chief.
The eighth or the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
That's before this is done.
Okay.
Yes.
Everyone good to move on? All right.
Okay. Page ten of the tracker, item number seventeen, we had a request to define the term inclusive or equity, we sort of combined it into the statement here that we would include on page eight of the introduction to go with the legacies and strategic commitments.
Councilmember Parker?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I wanted to, thank you, I really liked the definition, I went through a lot of definitions as, as we had talked about it, and many people use equity to define equity.
Right.
And it makes it very confusing, so, yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty concise, and I appreciate the, the ending there with no neighborhood being overburdened, so, thank you.
So, the motion?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lillikwist, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time, I'm on, I think, page eight, but I'm not.
We're on page ten.
No, page ten of the.
Page ten, we are now in number seven.
No, no, but the, on page ten, it says the change would occur on page eight of the introduction. I'm on page eight of the introduction, and I'm not, I'm not seeing where.
Okay, let me grab.
Thanks. Maybe in the wrong section?
No, at the bottom of, of page eight on the introduction, it talks about the city's legacies and strategic commitments.
Ah, okay.
Which emphasize a healthy environment, vibrant economy, sense of place, equity, and other important goals. So that's the first time in the plan that we really talk about equity, so I think it's appropriate to include the definition where it first occurs.
So that would go at the end of that bullet point, which would be the top of page nine in this case?
Yes.
Great, okay, I understand now, thank you so much.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us, this is for item number seventeen, to accept updated language, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, one excused.
Okay, and then our next proposed change is on page eleven of the tracker, number twenty-two. And that is a, a staff edit. In looking through, we realized that this particular policy is covered in several other places, so we're just further refining. Then we're not losing anything, we, it's just stated better elsewhere. This one.
Okay. Councilmember Murphy?
Move approval of the language removal for twenty-two.
Discussion? Okay, so we are on item number twenty-two, and we are accepting language removal, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Parker?
On twenty-one, the, exploring the capital facilities revolving funding directed at energy-efficient renewable energy. So, I, I read, I read the rebuttal from staff, but I'm, I'm still leaning toward it, and I'll, I'll explain why, is we have other things that we've talked about, like inclusive zoning, nothing that, right in this moment, we're looking at building a policy or ordinance around, but it's simply there, sitting, waiting. So say by chance that we win five million dollars from, from the energy prize, having some, like something sitting there waiting, or at least a discussion helped me understand why council might not want to do something like this, where it's spending money really to make money, and I understand that right at this very moment, we're not quite there, but if we were, if we were to come into something or have something where we could do this, we would have to come back and redo, you know, have an amendment to the comp plan and a public hearing. So I'm just interested in, is there, I mean, if we modified the language to stay exploring a capital facilities revolving fund or other funding mechanisms directed at energy efficiency and renewable energy, would that be appropriate?
I think so.
I'm going to defer to Public Works on this.
Yeah.
No, I can appreciate what you're saying, we did talk to the finance director a little bit about this one, and I think it's a good question as to whether or not we would have to come back to council to, if, in the future, to modify the comprehensive plan, and I wish Brian was here, because I think it's really more about your financial guidelines and fund accounting. I think the policy, which is aimed at, you know, moving forward with capital renewals that create energy savings is identified elsewhere in the plan, that general policy that we want to move forward and do energy efficiency projects is, is already covered in the plan, and the real question is the creation of a new fund where we would take the energy savings and put it into that fund. We had discussions with Brian about that, and the real challenge of doing that, obviously, is when you're in deficit budget right now, there really is no savings. The money that you don't have to spend on utility bills really just goes to try to reduce the deficit that you're already operating within, so I hear what you're saying is not necessarily do it now, but have policy direction to say, explore it. Defer to Brian if he was here, but my question was whether or not that's actually a comprehensive plan or in your financial guidelines.
Mayor Kelly?
And what I'd say is, I would, because of our capital needs, I, I would feel a little uncomfortable, I'm, I'm not a big fan of creating extra funds, because I believe that you are in charge of the priorities of the budget, so if you wanted to put it, energy projects at the top of the list, you can do that. Every time we create a fund, it takes away the flexibility to meet the most important need at the time, and so I think that it would be good if we didn't have this in here, even exploring it, because you do have control over it, and then listen to the, the presentation on capital and what we're looking at and what our real needs are before we create a potential another extra fund or separate fund that I think you've been doing a pretty good job of trying to reduce. And, and prioritize a, a, a project that would be energy efficient or renewable energy, because that's what you want to do, and you can do it with four votes, or six votes or seven votes.
Councilmember Lillikwist?
So, I, I agree that maybe we shouldn't specify a evolving fund so specifically, but I do appreciate what you're saying, is that you, you need the financial part of the package as well. I'm going to suggest a, a way to include that. Staff refers to policy CF eight as one of the policies that already addressed this issue. I think we could add two words in there that might go partway to where you would like to go, April. It currently says, continue efforts to minimize greenhouse gas emissions throughout Bellingham from municipal operations by implementing the programs and projects identified in the adopted Bellingham Climate Action Plan. Maybe we could include something like, and financing tools, or and financing mechanisms, or, it, maybe it is, it could be included within that policy that, I don't know, April, if you like that suggestion, or if it doesn't go where you need it to go.
I, I'm just going to jump in here for a second, so I'm, I'm kind of feeling like I'm in the middle right now, because I feel like if we don't find a way to prioritize energy efficiency and take the money that we are gaining, that we're saving, and putting it towards a rainy day fund, then those things don't always get prioritized, so I kind of would like to find a way here through this that we outline somewhere in our policy that we allocate certain, a certain amount of funds to energy efficiency, or how we prioritize them, or is there a way, I guess I'm kind of throwing that out there, is there a way that we can find to cover this particulars without doing a dedicated revolving?
Well, I think, I think you're, what you're still talking about, though, is, is punting the ability for the council to prioritize, if what we needed was a homeless shelter and the money that we're saving would get us that facility, and yet we've put it in, we've prioritized doing something else, which is important, but maybe not what we, we absolutely need that can't wait, then what we've done is, you, you could still do that. I think what I'm saying, Pinky, is you can always pick the priority you want. If, if you don't, that's a choice that the council makes, and, and setting a priority that potentially takes away the opportunity to really look every two years at what are the pressing needs in, in poor budget times is important. One of the things we do is, we have a little cap, which is down from twenty-five million to whatever it is now, a mil, well, a million maybe, and then we have the twelve percent that is our cushion, so we're not operating on the margin, the law says six percent. So we're, we're very healthy that way with our, with our reserves, and so if there was a priority, there'd either be cushion money or some other money, or if it goes into the general fund, you could choose to say, we don't want to spend it now, because you've made that a priority for this budget cycle, without calling this out over everything else that you've all said that you'd like us to do.
Councilmember Parker?
I, I appreciate the siloing, and, and I think we've seen that, right, whenever, and it does make it, I assume, difficult on finance of having to try to figure out how do you change those monies around, or if you even can, or do you have to come back to council to? I need, I, I think, because we can always come back to this, so I'd like some more time myself to understand and to go back, and then I can decide if I would like to bring forward a motion maybe in our next work session, but I, the, the reason why I think this is important, but where I need to maybe talk some more with staff and some others, is we do these really great projects, and then, of course, so say you do it to Arnie Hannah, then Arnie Hannah, of course, has now, they're not spending as much on their electricity bills and other things, but we haven't really capitalized on, on that savings more than, okay, now we just don't, we're not bleeding that money anymore. Whereas if we could realize that and give back to Public Works in some way to keep that fund going so we can continue to go out and do other. that fund going, so we can continue to go out and do other places, I think there's some times where there's these fundings that gets a little bit lost, because now, of course, Arnie Hannah's doing a lot better, and their budget's different, but, and that's where I need to get better educated, so I can bring it back.
So I, I have a question, and then I want to make a proposal, but I'll keep proposal, I want to just do the question first. Policy CF forty-eight refers to the Bellingham Climate Protection Action Plan. The question is, aren't we in the act of updating our climate action plan, and might some of the specific issues that April was referring to reside in that plan when it's updated, or currently reside in that plan? What will be in that plan, and are we updating it?
We are in the process of updating the climate action plan. It does have action items identified in the plan, opportunities for emissions reductions, and so we're, we're going back and looking at how we've done over the last several years compared to what we had hoped to gain in terms of reductions, and then we'll be identifying the next round of opportunities to further reduce municipal emissions. So many of these items, maybe in a broader context, will be in that plan, in terms of looking at our municipal buildings and energy efficiencies that potentially could be gained over time with investment.
Will that plan be a place where some of April's concerns might be addressed, or could be included, or is that the wrong place?
Well, I think that is an appropriate place to have some of that policy language, for sure, certainly in that plan. Uh, the mayor did ask me to speak to, Arnie Hannah's a good example, so Arnie Hannah, we went in, the council approved many years ago, about six million dollars worth of energy efficiency projects across all of our municipal buildings. Around three million dollars or so of that was at the Arnie Hannah facility. Arnie Hannah operates at about a two to three hundred thousand dollar a year deficit right now, so by any kind of energy reduction, there is no savings. It's a reduction in the amount of general fund subsidy. So you really do have to look at, as the mayor said, what are the priorities across the board, in terms of where do we want that general fund money to go? Because we're in deficit, there really is no additional money that can go into capital renewal. It's really, you're prioritizing that over other general fund needs, which could be across the gamut of the services we provide. So I think it's an argument versus very good policy direction to invest in our buildings to, to gain some energy efficiency, versus the flexibility to meet other goals that are equally important, that council would see every year during the budget process.
So what opportunities will Councilmember Barker and the rest of us have to look at the policy that goes into the new climate action plan?
So that climate action plan will be coming forward to council for approval. It's, uh, as I said, right now, we're going back and looking at how we've actually fared versus what we'd hope to do, modifying where we're at, and we'll be bringing that document back to council for approval of the updated plan.
If I might, um, clearly, we are looking for guidance on what to do. How to do it needs to preserve flexibility, so we can achieve the end. It might be possible to address this issue by having a policy that said, "When possible, energy savings should be directed to increase energy efficiency and support future renewable energy options." Essentially, that's the policy direction. How you do that could be perfected in other means, and it would preserve the intent.
And move what he said.
Second.
Welcome back.
Way to find solutions. So...
Is, is that a genuine staff proposal? Because I think April and I like that. And where would it go? Lisa?
We would find a place for it. Perhaps near CF eleven, which is talking about financing.
Um, so if we're going to make a motion to add that policy, um, yeah. Rick, would you mind restating your motion? I mean, your suggestion, so we can turn it into a motion?
Please restate April's motion.
It would be a policy, it would say, "When possible, energy savings should be directed to increase energy efficiency and support future renewable energy options." So it's a policy statement, that's what we want to do. We'll find the way to implement it that's going to work best, and it gives you the opportunity to look at multiple ways.
Okay. So, would someone like to care to make the motion on that?
Oh, that's...
Okay, all right. So we, um, the motion in front of us, and Marie, you got all the language from, from that, okay, all right. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And that was for item number twenty-one, but it is for adding a new policy under CF eleven. Councilmember Lillquist?
So it looks like we're done with capital facilities, or about to be done with it. So before we leave, I'd like to propose inclusion of one word in a policy in the capital facilities. It's kind of a feel-good word, but a really important feel-good, good word. On page four, goal CF one.
Is this in our packet?
No, it is not.
Uh, do you know what page we're talking, again, on what page we're in the planning?
Page four in the capital facilities chapter. And the goal is the first one, CF one. And it speaks very high level. It says, "Deliver safe, cost-effective, and accountable public facilities and services." It's a great goal. I would actually like to add the word inclusive, to deliver safe, inclusive, cost-effective, and accountable public facilities and services. It's the first and highest goal, and I think inclusivity of our infrastructure is important, that it's accessible to all manner of, you know, person. So it's just adding the word inclusive. I think inclusivity is generally part of what we do. It'd be nice if we said it out loud. So my motion would be to add the word inclusive to goal CF one.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay, we, uh, just to reconfirm where we are, we completed item number twenty-two, did we not?
Yes.
So we are now on land use and chapter in housing. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Sorry to go back on this. I just realized on, uh, number fourteen on page nine of your packet, in regards to the, the school districts. We also have Ferndale School District within our urban growth area, and they also serve ten acres in the Cordada neighborhood. So if we could just state, work collaboratively with school districts, that way, that way it's inclusive, includes all the districts, not just the Meridian and the Bellingham School District.
Some of...
Discussion? Okay.
This is item fourteen.
So this is for item number fourteen, um, to change the wording to with school districts, and not specifying which school districts. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Again, that was for item number fourteen. Thank you.
Okay, so my question on the land use and housing chapters, I, I don't believe we've, you were able to fully discuss this, or if you had additional comments or questions, do we want to do that first before going through these? Should do that first, or do you, do you want to go through the changes that we've already proposed?
Uh, I'm getting mixed. Councilmember Barker?
I'm confused, because we, we had time to go to the land use with you, and I think we...
You did. It, it didn't seem like to us that you had, it was a shorter session, that it seemed like perhaps there were additional questions or changes, but if there are not, we can start on this.
I had additional ones, but I submitted them all, and you've addressed them all here, so I'm okay, but I'm open to whatever you guys need.
Council, are we okay to move forward?
We start through these.
We also have the fifteen-minute public comment period that...
Let's, let's go through these, and then do the public comment period.
Okay, so page eleven of your packet, number twenty-three. April found some data regarding the number of languages spoken in schools, so we can change those numbers in the plan.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion?
Well, and this was, just so everybody knows, this was from OSPI website, and I was shocked to see it. I think it really speaks to the amount of diversity that we're gaining over time here in Bellingham, so I appreciate you including that.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, and that is for item number twenty-three, change to forty-three languages.
Okay. Number twenty-four, we're proposing to add the following statement to page twenty-eight of the land use chapter in the racial diversity sec, section.
Move approval.
And this is another April suggestion.
It moved.
So we've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Barker, did you have a question, discussion?
No, I just, again, wanted to, I, I run into this all the time, where I'm talking to people, and, and literally, I just see people, they're shocked, and I have to kind of go back over it again, to really help people understand, we are going through a massive cultural shift in America. And so I, I appreciate you guys being sensitive to that, and putting it here, and now maybe I can address, because once it's in here, it's, it's for real.
Okay. So we have a motion to adopt the updated language, and item number twenty-four, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, one excused.
Number twenty-five, staff is proposing to add some, or to actually replace some language on page twenty-four with the language below regarding adverse childhood experiences.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Barker?
There was just a, a couple of things that were missing here, so I would amend that motion with, um, you have on the third line there, includes abuse, neglect, death of a parent, parental divorce, but if you go over to the language on the left, it's missing or separation, witnessed domestic violence, living with someone who has a mental illness or substance abuse. Those are all, and incarceration, which I think is important for us to note, since we're having that discussion. You, you got most of them, but it eliminated about six of those.
I know, we're trying to be brief.
I know, you're trying to parse it down.
We're saying, these are examples, such as, there are others that we...
So you may either do it that way, maybe saying that they're examples, but I think anybody that reads this, that knows about ACES, would go, oh, why did they only say there's three? So, maybe...
Just says, these include, but are not limited to, we could say something like that, but are not limited to.
Yeah, that works for me.
Councilmember Lillquist?
No, I might want to actually name some of them. Domestic violence and substance abuse are powerful, um, in, in some ways, they are more traumatic than death of a parent, because they're an enduring, enduring trauma involving the parent. So, I mean, if I had to pick my three to include, I probably would pick a different three, so I'd rather include more of them. I, I know you want to keep the box small and short, but April, I'd kind of like to have a whole, full list.
Staff? Would you be willing to accommodate that? I realize that you're trying to...
I would accept an amendment to include the, the, the full list that is listed here by Councilmember Barker.
Yeah, so the, the restated amendment is to include all of the language of the factors that contribute to the ACES. It's just going to have to make it a linear kind of box. It's big enough.
We can shrink the font.
So then, the motion in front of us is to adopt the amended language, which includes the original description, description for ACE. All right, is everyone comfortable with that? All right? And this is item number twenty-five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, one excused.
Okay, next, number twenty-six, also on page twelve of the packet. We're proposing, proposing to add the following to page nineteen of the housing chapter, and that's also a suggestion from April.
Move approval. And we have a motion in front of us, this is for item number twenty-six. All those, we are on page number twelve of our packet.
Where would we add it? From the housing costs and neighborhood sections? Section? Of the housing chapter.
I thought I was in the housing chapter. No, I'm in land use, sorry.
It's in the supporting information section.
Okay, thank you, I was in the wrong chapter.
Okay, are we comfortable moving forward? All right. So, item number twenty-six.
Oh, wait, let's see, we just went through number twenty-six, so you voted on that, correct?
And so we voted on the twenty-sixth, okay.
So, next page is thirteen, and item number twenty...
No, we did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We voted on twenty-five.
Oh.
I was just holding, okay, I got myself confused. I was just holding off till Councilmember Lillquist had a chance to catch up. So we have a motion in front of us for item number twenty-six, to update the new language. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, again, for item number twenty-six.
Okay, page thirteen of your packet, number twenty-seven, there are two changes proposed within this number. These were suggestions from April to add, in all neighborhoods, staff added healthy and livable, that was a suggestion from a public comment. And then we've also added, and in all neighborhoods, to policy H twenty-two. So you might want to vote on those separately, or together, it's up to you. This is approval of both changes for twenty-seven.
Second. Discussion? Okay, motion includes both portions for item number twenty-seven. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, one excused.
Okay, moving on to item number twenty-eight, there's a change to add some new language on page twenty-three of the land use chapter, and this is the underlying portion, infills a tool that also balances opportunity and housing choice in every neighborhood.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? We are at item number twenty-eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, one excused.
Okay, item number twenty-nine, staff proposing, proposes adding new policy H, yet to be numbered, under policy H one of the housing chapter, listed here.
Councilmember Barker?
Some move.
Second. Discussion? Councilmember Lillquist?
I appreciate this, and I support the idea of, of mixing, rather than completely separating housing types. We went too far with zoning in the, you know, decades passed. And this is a housing chapter, but I, it's probably not the right place for it, but what's equally important is not have residential-only zones, to mix commercial opportunities, especially for like, you know, um, small commercial developments within residential areas. That's, you know, a weaker version of our urban village plan, the not-so-separate uses. So maybe it doesn't belong here, but I think the whole thing is in greenfield sites, new and greenfield sites is referring to. You can mix in more than just different housing types, but also some employment opportunities that are compatible next to neighborhoods. So I guess that's more common, because it doesn't belong in the housing chapter.
Okay. So, item number twenty-nine, we have a motion in front of us to approve the language, encourage mixed housing types. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, one, one excused.
Okay, the next item is item number thirty, and that spills over to page fourteen of the packet. And this is revised language to say, consider making attached ADUs truly auxiliary.
Can I ask for clarification of what that means?
Yeah.
Rick? Oh, in this policy regarding making ADUs truly auxiliary?
What is truly auxiliary?
What does that mean?
Uh, one of the ways you can structure ADUs should, again, we'd have to go through a whole public process, we would need to come before you with an ordinance, you would have to define it more fully. In many locations, ADUs are considered accessory uses, and what that does is it encourages their development by limiting the need for separate connection charges, for example, or impact fees, because it would be like any other accessory use you could do with a primary use. It's an alternative way of approaching it, and where it's appropriate. Again, this is not defining where it would be allowed within the community at this time. It should be an approach to be considered, if you wish to encourage it in some areas.
Councilmember Lillquist?
Are you saying that there is an important difference between accessory and auxiliary?
Um, it, it is, it's usually, I, I guess the correct language would be, consider making ADUs accessory resident, accessory to residential uses, and then to provide clarity where permitted, because I think at this point, we haven't had that discussion on where to locate them, if anywhere.
What is the opposite, or what is different from accessory?
Otherwise, it's considered a primary use, and a primary use would then be subject to impact fees, connection charges, um, which becomes a huge cost barrier to achieving them.
Uh, Councilmember Knutson?
Yeah, I'm confused when it says, permit owner-occupied, attached ADUs in single-family and multifamily zones, and then you say, we don't know where we're going to put them. Well, why not put that language in there? Because this, to me, if I'm reading this, it's everywhere, it's citywide, and we know, and everybody knows in this room, that there's neighborhoods that don't want them, so...
And, and we're, to be fair...
That's why I don't understand.
This is, I'm sorry, this is specific to... This is, I'm sorry, this is specific to detached, which is already allowed in single-family, multifamily.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread.
Right, the policy is just supporting the rules.
Clarification.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that before we went down that.
And, and I apologize if I clouded the issue, I was talking about the zoning approach.
No, that's my fault.
Okay.
I have dyslexia, I guess.
No, I thank you for that, Gene.
This comes from several neighborhood meetings that I attended. Really, there are some people out that are saying, don't do detached, do attached, because they're more environmentally sensible. If you try to go through that process, and talking with other constituents, it's not as easy as having a 25,000 square foot home that has a separate entrance with, that, that you're not using so much anymore, maybe your kids have grown, and you could, you could say, okay, I could section off this part of my house, and it could be, I could have a renter here. Currently, the, the process is extremely difficult, it's, it seems to me to be almost as difficult as building a detached if it's allowed in the area. You have to have, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you have to have separate meters. So if, if I have a, a larger home, and I, or a constituent had that, and they wanted to morph, like their children went away to college, now they could have more info, oh, their children are moving back, and they want to have more space, now they, they don't have to have this whole separate place that has a fire barrier, and all these things that they spent so much money on doing. So it encourages, in my opinion, people allowing for more of those innovative and nimble uses in a home that we talk about. So that's, that's where the concern was in talking with, and then especially in those neighborhoods that don't want detached, but are saying, oh, but people can do attached, not understanding the barriers that are there to currently do an attached ADU. That we could limit those barriers, or at least have it in our language, so when it's appropriate, time-sensitive, we could bring it back.
Councilmember Lillquist.
So I, I still think that this language is a little bit ambiguous, especially to just, you know, someone who didn't have this discussion and read those words. This one, and then the later item has to do with ADUs. I, I just want to be very clear, I am a supporter of both detached and attached ADUs. I just think there needs to be some really clear limits and rules on attached and detached ADUs to limit their excessive use, such that they kind of undermine the entire intent of, of zoning, so I, and I, I can't quite tell whether this language is moving towards what I would like, which is to make attached and detached ADUs possible, or if it's moving away from that and making it more difficult, because I, I really would like us to be more open-minded, and there are some neighborhoods which are very open-minded about this, but there needs to be limits, because there's other neighborhoods which have been harmed by the fact that they've gone forward in a, in a less controlled, you know, manner.
I think, I think we're addressing those in 34 and 35, and this is just attached ADUs, if I understood that correctly. Was that correct? Rick?
Yes, and I, I think it is just attached. What I would suggest is perhaps a rephrase, consider making ADUs accessory as to zoning, because that clarifies what the intent is.
I don't know.
It's an accessory use as to zoning.
Do you think that's clear to professionals who have to apply this policy?
An accessory, it would define it as a true accessory use, and would say, it is not a primary use when it would come to, to other issues that would be raised. And, and that will have, we'll have to flesh that out, that will give us a start to deal with the ordinance itself.
Okay, but if you think that's clear for a professional, both in the city and outside, to apply that policy, then I, I would like to see that changed.
I would suggest it would be a starting point for us, as we came forward with subsequent ordinance, ordinance revisions, we'd use that to frame specific rules.
Okay, so for item number 30, then, are we gonna postpone this until we find different verbiage, or do you want to specify that already, Rick?
Let, let us work on language to come back.
Okay, so, number 30 is on, is on, is on hold. Councilmember Barker, are you okay with, okay, alright, next.
Okay, so moving on, the next proposed change, and it's actually not a change, but I highlighted it, just for clarification. Policy H7 currently reads as follows, and at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, there was a 5-1 vote to adopt Planning Commission's draft language, which is what is currently shown in the draft chapter, and with purple underlines. So, just reiterating that that's what will be in the final version.
So we don't need a motion for that?
I don't think so, no, because you've already, you voted on it. Item number 35, staff proposes modifying policy H15 to remove the term countywide housing affordability task force. Replace that with the, the term, the, the city group that actually reviewed the chat's recommendations.
Approval. Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Barker.
So when we say in here, right now, requiring owner occupancy in single-family zones, we're, we're stating that that is for sure gonna be in an ordinance?
He's on 34.
Sorry, aren't we on 34?
35.
35.
Oh, we skipped 34.
Should we go back to 34 afterwards?
I can, I can wait on my question, I'm.
Councilmember Hammond.
Just a point of clarification, so Councilmember Borneman, who's not here, submitted some comments, and one of those is regarding policy H15, how does, how does council normally handle an absent council member who has comments that he wants to, or she to introduce into the record?
Well, I think that you could read those in, if you care to, Councilmember Hammond, or I can, either one.
Sure, I'll, I'll read them in. So, this is from Councilmember Borneman, he's saying, regarding policy H15, this should be stricken, this should not come from chat, which is countywide housing affordability task force, and the recommendations of the Community Solutions Work Group. If they contain references to permitting detached ADUs, were never accepted by the council, and therefore should not be included, pardon me, in the comprehensive plan. So I, I just wanted to introduce those comments, that, I, I do actually disagree with them. If you do look at the chat plan, this is from 2008, on page three of the executive summary, they do talk about ADUs in here, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Is there anyone who supports this, that would like to make a motion, or is this null and void? Okay, I'm not getting anything from the council, so his comments were received, but not supported. Councilmember Lillquist.
Just a comment, Terry is right that those recommendations have not been accepted by the council yet, but this is exactly how the council would accept them. This is the act of taking out those recommendations and putting them into our comprehensive plan. So this is the council action, which, right now, hasn't occurred yet.
Can I ask for clarification on this? And I'm, I'm not, I'm still learning, so I'm not sure where things go with policy, or et cetera. But one of the discussions we've had through the comp plan was a variance in impact fees for smaller units, for example, ADUs. So where, does that, that doesn't go in our comprehensive plan, that goes in our zoning to support this, or how?
I don't know where it is right now, but we do have several general policies regarding incentives for various housing types, and that includes exactly what you're talking about. So I believe we have the policy support currently in the plan for doing that.
Okay, so they are in the comprehensive plan?
Yes, and I'll, I can find those and pull those out.
I know, I've, I've read a few comments about that, and I just was, wanted to make sure that that is, so.
Yes, we have at least two or three policies about reviewing our fees and development process to make sure that they're encouraging the type of development that we want to see.
Okay. Any other comments on item number 35? Okay. Did we have, we had a motion, did we not? Okay, just want to make sure that we had that for item number 35, and we had a second, so we are accepting the language on item number 35, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. So question back to number 34, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I, we skipped number 32, apologies.
Okay, 32.
So that was regarding policy H17 in the housing chapter.
Okay.
About inclusionary zoning, there was a 5-1 vote by the council to use staff's original language, which, which says, consider developing an inclusionary zoning program as a means of increasing the city's affordable housing supply. I don't think you need to vote on that, because you already did.
Okay.
But I wanted to point that out as a change that was made.
Okay. And then, number 34, you have highlighted, and I think Councilmember Barker had some questions on there, we skipped that one, I don't know if we, there was an action?
We didn't vote on.
Well, there was a 5-1 vote, I, I don't believe you need to vote again.
Okay.
But if you had comments to make, you can.
Councilmember Barker.
Yeah, just after the meeting, we, I felt a little bit rushed in that housing one, and this is a new process for me, and requiring owner occupied in the single-family zones. So, I guess what I'm understanding is that because this is here, in black and white, then when we develop an ordinance, it's gonna have to have that in there, because I don't necessarily believe in this. And, and I've spoken with many other people who really feel strongly about their rights and their property rights, and, and I do know that it makes it difficult to enforce something like this, and I don't think we need to make things any more difficult to enforce. The real issue, in the understanding, and all the neighborhood meetings I've attended and spoken with many representatives, is that they're trying to get at limiting the inappropriate behavior, and really inappropriate behavior is in our codes with our police and all those things. And, and you're basically asking somebody to maybe incentivize them to put an ADU, and then something happens in their family, and they decide, they'd like to move, but they'd like to keep their investment, and now we have something that's gonna be out of the housing stock, because they can't rent out both. And so, I just want to make sure that if this is in here, we're not necessarily, this is just suggestions at this point, and then when we develop the ordinance, we can talk about these things again.
Rick, second.
It is, it is not a specific requirement, in the sense it says with priorities on requiring owner occupancy in single-family homes, not to update the ADU ordinance and require owner occupancy in single-family homes. However, we would now, since it is included in this way, we would have to show either how we're meeting it, or why it's not applicable. We'd have to address that in anything we brought before.
So we could have that discussion again, and if councils, if, if, say I could get support for that, we could move that through at that time?
Again, it, it's, it's not specifically requiring it, however, we'd have to have a pretty good reason not to do it. So we'll have to consider it as you bring it forward.
Okay, so if at this point, I, even though I voted for this language, I could still vote to amend this and remove that? I mean, I could motion that and see if the council would support it?
We certainly can, you know, consider, should, at the end of the day, you have a policy you're advancing, as long as it's not inconsistent with the comp plan, and the question would be, is did we consider and place priority on owner occupancy? May not be in every zone, may not be in every instance, did we evaluate it? If we find that owner occupancy isn't, or shouldn't be required, in certain circumstances or all circumstances, we'd have to at that time say, do we need to amend the comp plan, or can we proceed at that notion?
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to remove requiring owner occupancy in single-family zones, and, and there's, if you need, I can give you a lot of, of information regarding different case studies that were done up and down the West Coast, all the way up into Canada, Vancouver, at how do you really make these detached ADUs, how do they really take hold and become, and they're not restrictive, and they don't have a lot of barriers, and the, the owner occupied was a huge one. And then in talking with more neighborhood associations and people, there's a real misunderstanding of thinking that, you know, renters are, are bad, and renters aren't. And if somebody's capable of renting out both, then they should be able to do that, if they need to move away for a while and then come back, they should be able to keep, and we shouldn't lose any inventory. And so if we, if we have issues, we really need to get at, what is that owner occupied saying? Is that just another one of those terms that we get to say, that really is based in class a little bit, that we want to make sure? There's no, you can't, there's no other house that you can say, you can't live in there unless you own it. Like, that's just, to me, it's very highly charged, and I, I think we need to be very careful moving forward, and having language like that, that is extremely exclusionary. So I'm making a motion that we strike that language, and then if we decide to put it in there, I guess we, we have that discussion in the ordinance. That's my motion.
Well, I'll second it, so that we can have discussion. Councilmember Lillquist.
I won't be supporting it. I, I do think owner occupancy is an important aspect, I could be wrong, I'd be happy to see the studies that you have. I would like to adopt this language, however, it creates a strong presumption that owner occupancy should be part of any rules that we have. I don't think it's necessarily exclusive or classist, as you say, because it actually enables people of limited means to make a property work. By being able to rent out part of the property, they can make a mortgage payment they couldn't otherwise make, they can live in a, a smaller, in the accessory unit, rather than the main one. I mean, these are actually ways that people can work their way up, it isn't just rich people putting in something, it's ordinary people putting in something. And I think that owner occupancy creates a kind of accountability, which is otherwise lacking. One of the problems we've had with rentals in general, is very difficult sometimes to find the actual owner. You're through several layers of management company or holding company. An owner is someone who's immediately identifiable and accountable. As you say, we address a lot of these concerns through our nuisance and, and misbehavior regulations, but if you can't find the party who owns it, you can't tell them they're in violation of those nuisance regulations. So owner occupancy is an important kind of prerequisite for those other regulations to work. So I see many reasons why owner occupancy probably should be the presumption, and so I want to keep it in here as the presumption.
I'm just gonna throw my comments in here. So, I actually support what you're saying, and I think that part of the push has been from the neighborhoods who feel as though if someone doesn't own property on the land, that they can't control what's happening there. So I kind of understand where that might have come from, but we've made some great strides, our rental registration now ensures that we know who owns a home, and it also gives us an opportunity to know exactly what is in our bucket of what, how many properties we have to rent. And we have a shortage on housing and renting, so maybe the more exclusions that we put in this, the more challenging we're actually making it for us in the long run. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support your, your motion. Councilmember Murphy, then, Barker.
I'm also gonna join in the support. It is horrible to try to find rental units in our community, and it is a big challenge. And one thing that I think about when I consider ADUs is the fact that we have seen poor forms of ADUs in our community, but we are going to develop standards to get better forms of ADUs. I have seen successful ADU initiatives in other cities, and I want our community to have that, to help us meet our growth management standards. But also, wouldn't it be great if somebody could live in a community that they might not be able to afford? Because a lot of times, you can't afford to buy a house in some of our bigger lot, fancier neighborhoods, but wouldn't it be great if you could enjoy that quality of life? So that's why, some of the reasons why I'm gonna support this.
Councilmember Barker, and then Knutson.
And you, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the no more than three, which is onerous and difficult for us to implement. When we do something like owner occupied, I think it, it really gives the wrong message to people out there that think somehow this is gonna protect them if somebody puts an ADU in next door to them. It, it's giving you, the, the city, my understanding is, because currently, we have that situation in our neighborhood, city sends out a letter, says, are you living there? Person signs it, says, yeah, not living there. So it's one more thing that we're putting on our city to try to manage, that we really can't manage, because it's somebody's private property. If they're breaking the laws, then they're breaking the laws, and then we need to enforce those through our rental registration and other things. And this, because, because you're not an owner, you can't live there, it's just very exclusive. So, Rick, I don't know if you have any more to say that, but I, I think it does put more burden on our planning department, and, and if we remove that, it's, how do you enforce that?
Well, typically, we'd put a restrictive covenant on land, and then the issue comes where we'd follow up and say, are you residing there, and meet the definition of how long you have to live there. And again, it's easy to thwart those kind of requirements. The basis for owner occupancy generally is, if there's nuisance created, the owner is present on the site and has a vested interest in the outcome. But you raised the point, is shouldn't we just be enforcing nuisance?
Councilmember Knutson.
Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, this policy, didn't we first put this in when the proverbial you-know-what hit the fan in 1994, when we first started talking about this?
Owner occupancy has always been a requirement of our ADUs. The, the Planning Commission struggled with this issue, they probably spent more time on this than anything else in the comp plan. They developed this language based on a lot of the testimony that they heard from people and from neighborhoods, saying, if you're gonna allow ADUs, at least require the owner to live there.
And that is exactly what we came up with in 1994, because we did hear a lot of stories from people back then. But the, the, the thing that strikes me is, now it's accessory dwelling units, back then, it was mother-in-law apartments, a mother-in-law cottages, whatever you want to call them. Well, who wants their mother-in-law living with them? Nobody. And I'm saying that not as a joke, because that was a crazy statement to put in there. It was absolutely, mother-in-law, it's gonna go as another rental unit, that's exactly what we're gonna do. Now, I understand people talking about enforcement, that's, we could go over every issue we deal with about. That's, we could go over every issue we deal with about enforcement. But this language has been in here for a long time. I think you're going to see the wrath if we take this out of there. I cannot support it. I supported putting it in in the first place because of all the rancor we heard about even, even considering, even allowing owner occupied ADUs. So this has been a policy for a long time. And if we change it now, the whole thing's going to be, it's going to be very interesting.
Councilmember Hamel?
I guess I'll wade into this one. I'm really struggling with this particular sentence here because of the, the type of market that we have right now. So a healthy market is 3% to 5% roughly vacancy rate. So three favoring the landlord and five favoring the, the person who's looking for a home. Right now, we have a 0.2% vacancy rate. It's unheard of. And, and we're not alone. Communities across the West Coast face these issues as well. I struggle with this because I, I identify with these neighborhoods that don't want to have some of the problems that they've had in the past with density issues, parking behaviors, things like that. On the other hand, we also have 719 homeless individuals who are either unsheltered, living in cars, camps, or elsewhere in our community. So, um, our housing inventory is not caught up. It is in the process of catching up. You've seen some of the developments that are happening off of Lincoln and Forest and elsewhere. Some of the infill, it's very encouraging. But at some point, I think that neighborhoods do have to accept some level of infill. And the, the second qualifying sentence in this, under H7, H7 is identifying appropriate areas for detached ADUs. I mean, I think that that's, to me, that speaks to the, the trust and the intent of our, our city staff. Will they, will they do that? I believe they would. So I, I will be supporting this.
Councilmember Murphy?
I just wanted to clarify too. I am in no way trying to force ADUs on neighborhoods that do not want it. I love that we are setting the direction that says neighborhoods that are open to it.
Councilmember Hamel?
And just to add on to that, I think that there are neighborhoods that are, they're dense. And they, they've taken what they can take. And there may be pockets of exceptions. And there may not be. In some areas like York neighborhood, I don't know that there is anymore within the, the confines of the, what's defined as the York neighborhood. And that may be true for parts of Columbia. I, I don't know. But there are other neighborhoods. We have heard from Happy Valley and other neighborhoods that, that are open to these, these ideas. And they must be done well, too. We had a person that came up and spoke to us, perhaps a couple of months ago, where the person had built an ADU and completely sheltered and shaded out her back lawn. That person was furious and she had a right to be furious because that, to me, it wasn't done properly. So I think that we do need to make sure that we do it properly. We do it in areas where it's appropriate and, and welcome. And, and we do need to recognize that some neighborhoods, some neighborhoods have absorbed pretty much all they can. And let's look to those other neighborhoods. We have several that, that can accommodate.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Barker, then Lilac.
So, yeah, just my final in. The reason why I'm asking to have that stricken is also if you think about needing inventory and if you're a property owner and you're thinking about, "I might be able to do this and the planning department can probably work with me because they've done all this other stuff." Am I going to make a $60,000 to $120,000 investment, knowing that you don't know what happens tomorrow? So I do that, I make it. And then if I need to move, I'm basically forcing myself into a sale or I'm forcing myself into only being able to rent out one of those units. And I think that's a barrier where maybe since, you know, 1994, we've seen where people, and, and of course, send the case study saying, "What are all the limits to people doing this?" And that was one of them. Because you're, you're talking about massive investment and you're going to want your return on it. But we don't know what happens tomorrow. So you're limiting somebody in that. So that's my, my ask for, and of course, we can have this discussion again when it comes forward. But I, I don't want to have to re-admon the comp plan to do it.
Uh, councilmember Lilac.
I think that despite the disagreement, a lot of us are, have a very similar feelings. I'll state what I said earlier. I'm fully in support of both detached and attached ADUs. I just want there to be certain limits on them. So, you know, what councilmember Hamel referred to. There's some terrible examples out there. And there are some neighborhoods which have been overly affected by these because they weren't properly regulated. This is not a vote for or against ADUs. As everyone has said, we're going to work out the ugly, ugly details, or the beautiful details, in an actual ADU ordinance. And this is policy language to guide that ADU ordinance and create a strong presumption for what that ADU ordinance will look like. To your original question, April, we could actually go against the comp plan in the final version if we had strong reasons. But right now, we're setting our initial take on it. And I'm with Jean on this. Single-family zoning has had a certain meaning. And the owner occupancy requirement has served to preserve that. If we're looking for greater density, then you don't do it by changing the meaning of single-family zoning. You do it by changing the zoning, by changing the allowable ranges of uses, by adopting a more duplex zoning, for example, which would be one way around this. Or just genuine multifamily zoning. I'm going to vote to support keeping this language for now. But I think we all agree it's going to be revisited.
Okay. So we have a motion in front of us right now. This is for item number 34. And it would, to be removed, the verbiage that says requiring owner occupancy in single-family zones. All those in favor of removing this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to two with one excused. Okay, Lisa, back to you.
With that, we've gotten through our entire comment tracker. And I applaud you for that. That's great work. And we have just about 20 minutes left. And we do need to get the 15-minute public comment.
Okay, so we're going to go to public comment. And then afterwards, if there's any follow-up or additional comments from staff, we'll take those at that time. Uh, is there anyone who would speak, who cares to speak for public comment? If so, please come on down. Don't fight the crowds. Going once? Twice? I got to take her. Come on down, Linda.
Linda Twitchell, BIAWC. A couple of just procedural things. What's up there does not identify the number of the item you're dealing with. So when you're saying number 33 or 35, I, I know. But, but the, the other interesting thing going on here.
It's not matching the policy.
Do we have audio tapes coming out on this? Because nobody here is identifying themselves when they're speaking. Just, just another procedural thing that would help the public who doesn't show up here today figure this out. And then if we have sent in general comments, I'm curious. The, the comment tracker addressed a lot of the staff stuff. Is there going to be any discussion of comments submitted from the public?
Um, our packet does include the comments, but I don't know the answer to that. Maybe Rick and Lisa could answer that.
I mean, you know, people come in and say, "Please look at this," or "Do this," and "Do this." And in, in the Planning Commission, when we did this, those things were included in the comment tracker. So just, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. So to address that, our packets do include the comments that have been submitted by the public. Alisa, is there anything that you want to say?
Yes, we do have a separate comment tracker for all the public comments. So every single letter, email that you get is in the public comment tracker. And staff has responded to all of those comments in the same way that we've responded to yours. In some cases, there might be changes that we recommend based on the public comments. And we will bring those forward as well.
Okay, thank you. So council, any other additional questions or items that you want to talk about in these chapters? No? Okay. And staff?
So just, just a question. Where are we now? What are we going to do next?
Staff, maybe you could give us a little review of the timeline before we close out and...
Uh, good afternoon, Greg Ock, Planning Department. Your next meeting is August 8th, where we will recap for you the comments, questions, and directions you gave us on the environment and economic development chapters. So we'll start the meeting with that. And then once we complete that, we'll start the review of the design chapter. So that's next. And then you get a break. And we all get a little break. And then we come back on the 29th, so the end of the month.